Hey everyone on YouTube, I am doing something a little different today. I am bringing my group breathwork session to you. This is live. Join me here and I will walk you through a guided breathwork session. Normally these are closed settings. But I have decided. That's up to everybody and I am letting my community in. Join me on Zoom. Private. If you're out there in YouTube land, just be patient with me here as I wait for my regulars to join me. Good morning, Ms. Laura. I have opted to do something a little unique here today. It was pressed on my heart to put this live. On YouTube. So if you share anything with me in here today that you would prefer the rest of the world not to know about, uh, just put it in a private chat for me. But. I believe that, uh. People need to be nurtured today, so. Again, YouTube, just bear with me here. This isn't normal that I put this live like this. Morning Shelley. Good morning, Mr. Ken. How is your patience? Good. Alright, awesome. So just so you folks know, uh, it was pressed on my heart today to take this live as well on YouTube. We had a really good YouTube live this morning and there are a lot of hurting people in this world. So this is live on YouTube in hopes of nurturing some souls that need nurturing today. So I'll give it a few more minutes while you guys are hanging out. Ken is driving today, so be careful, brother. Do not close your eyes. And make sure you got lots of energy while you're breathing because I don't recommend doing this behind a wheel, but he's done this before, so. Um, this is very relaxing and, uh, really calms the body. Though right now I see that he is energized and a lot of, a lot of times it will energize you as well. It depends what your body needs. And he is energized and he is taking care of his daughter right now. Keep his daughter Jessica in your prayers because she is on the other side of a five and a half hour knee surgery. At age 20, which is really crazy. Oh, Laura, that is awesome sauce. Laura is laying in her backyard in the grass with her dogs. You are not going to get a better experience than that, looking up at the trees, listening to nature. And grounding yourself. Oh, that's awesome. I wish I could join you right now. Alright, so while you guys are getting cozy, I'm just going to, um, share a couple of things with those on YouTube that are joining live. Um. So as always, this is very important to mention, um, consult your physician before starting any new health regimen or protocols, especially if you're pregnant breastfeeding, or if you have any unique or special medical conditions. The content of this, um. Breathwork session this morning is to nurture you and calm the body. I am not here to cure, treat, mitigate, or diagnose any medical condition or disease. So please know that this is very nurturing, very calming, and, um, you can't screw this up. For those of you that might be joining that feel that breathwork goes against your, um, Christianity, I want to tell you that God is the one that breathed life into us. Genesis 2:7, he is the, he was our first breath. Our breath is, does not go against. God. It just. The other way other people use it. We need to be discerning, but this is very gentle. You will be bathed in Jesus today. I promise you that. So. Make sure you've gone to the restroom, um, make sure that you have a comfortable place to lie down. It is best if you can lay down. And let me reiterate that Mr. Ken was driving, but he is now flat on his back and ready to roll. So, um, like I said, I don't recommend that you do this driving, um, because it can calm the body a lot. So if you've never done breathwork before, please don't do it behind a wheel. Um, like I said, Mr. Ken is well versed, very practiced in breathwork. He's been joining me for what, two years now? So, um, also make sure that you have a glass of water handy because you're likely going to get parched as you're breathing. Um, you can use headphones or just have your phone handy, whatever works best for you. Um, use your laptop, whatever, just, um. And, and keep in mind that this is a very private session. You can only see me. You can only hear me even though I have other people present in my Zoom community here. It's good to have pillows so that you can have a pillow under your neck and also under your knees while you're laying flat, so it's supporting your lower back. It's also good to have a blanket because some people get hot, some people get cold. So, uh, also know that as you're breathing, and let me share about the breathing, the breathing is a circular breath. We start off with three breaths and then you continue in this circular pattern. It's typically a three second inhale and a three second exhale. If that feels too much, kick it back, make it two seconds, one second, whatever, you know, this is really good for people with lung disorders because this will help expand your lungs. Just, it's gentle, start off gentle, that nothing should be forced. And then your exhale is going to match whatever your inhale is. So if you find four seconds is best, match the exhale to four seconds. And you go right from the inhale into the exhale. There's no holding your breath. It's very calming. And you can breathe in through your nose and out through your mouth or any combination. I will say that it is best if you breathe in through your nose and out through your nose. That is how our bodies are designed. However, we're programmed in other ways, so breathe how it's comfortable for you. Um, know that you're right where you need to be. If you found me on YouTube right now, there's a reason you're here. Just stick with me. This is joyous. Laura, that is just so inviting. Oh my goodness. Good morning, Ms. Deb. So, uh, Ms. Deb, we are, we are broadcasting live on YouTube this morning because I felt like Papa pressed that on my heart. So just know that, um, if you want me to not share things with the world, put it in a private message or note so in the, in the, uh, any comments that you shared today. Um. Because I do keep these things very private, very personal, and a lot of my regulars join me and we just pray for one another. We love on each other. So you're welcome to join me in the Zoom. Um, for future sessions by going to faithledhealing.com/workwithme. Scroll down, you'll find my group sessions. Um, also, as you're breathing, you activate your memory side of the brain, so you may, you know, experience some, uh, recalls. That's okay. Acknowledge them and let them go. Our past belongs in the past. We are moving forward, so don't be alarmed by that. You may experience emotions, whatever happens here stays here. So if you need to cry, cry. We've been programmed to stuff our emotions. That could not be more wrong. We are creating dis-ease in the body by not allowing our emotions to flow. So if you need to cry, cry. If you're angry, be mad. If you are sad, be sad. If you need to laugh, laugh your heart out. Laughter is good for the soul and good for the body. Um, know that you may experience tightness or tension in the body while you are breathing. That is the body just letting go of stuff, so don't be alarmed or worried about it. I have the chat live on YouTube, so if you need to communicate with me, please do so. Please do so. Uh, let me know if you need anything. Uh, I am here to support you and want to be able to help you in any way that I can. So you've got chats available to you. I've shared everything with you. Um. And as always, get in the chat. Let me know if you have praises or prayer requests. Um. Or need to share what's on your heart. Be, know that I'm going to pray for you today. I wear my heart and my faith on my sleeve intentionally. And, uh, I'm unapologetically me and I'm unapologetically a Christian. I am not going to shove it down your throat, but I am going to share how I roll with you. Um, so hopefully that doesn't offend anybody. That's certainly never my intention. But, uh, God saved my life twice, so I owe him that honor. Alright, so let's go ahead and get started, everybody. Just gently close your eyes and just scan your body. See where you're at today. No judgment, just, you know, you might have some aches and pains. You might feel a little uncomfortable somewhere, maybe a little inflammation. Just acknowledge it. Awareness, that's all. Listen to the sounds around you. Laura, I'm jealous. I'm inside, but she's just laying in her grass in her backyard. How beautiful. Thank you for bringing that environment to me today. Listen to the sounds around you and let's go ahead and just take in that first breath in. Gentle exhale. Keep breathing in that pattern. Tickle in my throat, so keep breathing. You just know that you're right where you need to be right now. You are safe. You're supported. The first 15 minutes are a little uncomfortable for some people because you're used to moving. You're used to just flying by the seat of your pants. It's hard to slow down. Just slow down. Know that you're safe. You're right where you need to be. Know that Papa is holding you in his hands. Just allow these first 15 minutes to just allow your body to calm down. We are all moving at such a crazy clip because that's what the world dictates. Just rest. Rest where he has you. Know that you are valuable. Know that you are important. Know that you are here. For a reason. Chat was open for the YouTube. Hear me talking throughout this session. And just guide you and direct you through the entire thing. Going to read something to you. I'm not going to pray over you. By Gem Fadling. Just continue to breathe as I'm reading this. B. Be here. Not somewhere else. Not sometime else. Now. Here. B. R. Relax. Relax your shoulders. Relax your eyes. Relax your jaw. Relax your belly. Relax your mind. E. Encounter. Encounter God in this still quiet place. Remember that you're not alone. God is not elsewhere. God is with you. Right here. Right now. Encounter. Laura's being loved on by her dolls. A. Awaken. Awaken to your emotions. Are you anxious? Are you joyful? Are you sad? Do you feel rushed? Happy? Frustrated? God is with you as you feel this. Awaken to God's presence. Awaken. Beautiful Deb. T. Thank. Thank God for being with you. Thank God for this moment of respite. Thank God for reminding you to pause. Thank God for whatever is in your heart. Gratitude is a natural attitude shifter. Thank. H. Hope. Hope in God. Ask God for help. You are not alone. Trust God to care for you. Hope. E. Engage your life with more peace. Resume your tasks with a enter a relationship with a little more perspective. Engage from a place of grace. Engage at the pace of grace. Counter God. Awaken. Thank. Hope. And engage. Going to have you on your next inhale, take in a deeper breath. When you take in that deeper breath, you're going to feel like you've hit a wall. That's normal. Don't be worried. Don't be afraid. Just acknowledge and see where your lungs are at. This is your gauge because at the end of this hour, you are going to be amazed at how much your lungs have expanded. So on your next inhale, go ahead and take in a much deeper breath. Fill your lungs. Feel that wall. Just gently exhale. And go right back into the nice three deeper breaths. Nice gentle circular breath. Just settle in in these 15 minutes. Just continue. Deb says, "Good idea to lay in the grass, Laura. I'm joining you. Been out in neighbor's hayfield a bit this morning." Guys, that's so inviting. I love it. I love it. So I am going to pray while you guys are breathing, so just continue to breathe. Rest in his hands, rest in that breath. Papa, I just come to you this morning and I praise you for each of these beautiful people in front of me on my Zoom. And I praise you for those that are joining on YouTube and watching the replay. And our community as well. Papa, I just thank you for each of these beautiful people. Thank you for placing me in this seat that I get to watch your hand at work every day. In my practice as an integrative health practitioner and a breath worker, Papa, I am seeing your hand across the board, moving mightily, nurturing, restoring. Rebalancing and doing your miraculous healing. You are the miraculous healer and we just praise you for what you're doing now. For what you're going to do. And we just, we just praise you for what you've done in Ken's body and the total healing that you've brought to him. We praise you for what you're doing for Shelley and Laura and how you are re-strengthening them, guiding them, restoring them. And we praise you now for the total healing that you're going to bring. Papa, we lift up Deb and we just praise you and thank you for what you've done and are doing in her life, how you're restoring her, her family. We just praise you for that. Papa, we lift up my daughter Taylor to you and we just praise you for what you're doing in her life and her children's lives and how you, uh, brought she and Austin together in conversation this weekend. We just praise you for that. We praised you for it before it happened and we trusted you to bring it to fruition. We also trust you for full restoration there for our family. And I, I praise you for what you're doing in Deb's family for restoration. And Laura's. Shelley's. And the rest of our community that has been praising you and praying over that. We praise you for what you're doing in Kenya and how you're restoring order. We pray for all of those that are affected by the floods and the hurricanes and the poor weather and the forest fires. Be with all of our first responders. Be with Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, with the tragedies that happened two weekends ago. We just praise you for what you're doing there. How you're bringing things together. How you bring beauty from the ashes. Papa, we pray over our YouTube community because we know that when we go live, there are people that need restoration, that need love, that need hope. I ask that you wrap your loving arms around all of them. And just nurture them. Bring them to our community, Papa, so that we can also, uh, reveal your light through us and wrap our arms around them, walk through their struggles with them and pray for them. And we just praise you for all the people you're bringing. It's just an amazing, beautiful orchestrated symphony. And that's what you're doing and we praise you for it. I lift up Jessica and just praise you for the surgeons and, and the restorative surgery that took place yesterday. A five and a half hour surgery that is going to enable her to go back to college and be able to play volleyball. Papa, you are so amazing and our bodies are miraculous healing machines and we praise you for that. We praise you for the no pain that she's experiencing and the quick healing that you are bringing forth. Papa, I lift up Jack, Shelley's client. We just pray over him for, um, healing in his 97-year-old body and, uh. Papa, just, uh. Nurture the soul that pushed him. They need your love. They need your grace. They need your mercy. They need you. They've got a bitter heart and we just praise you because we know that you can restore where we can't. And just thank you for the wisdom, knowledge, direction, discernment, guidance that you bring us every day. And again, I just humbly praise you for the seat you sit me in, to be able to watch your hand at work. And I will always ask for it to be all of you and none of me. Speak through me, your words, not mine. And thank you for the abundance and blessings along the way. And for many of us, the healing journey, and I pray that they find blessing in the waiting period. May they see your hand and may their healing journey be their most glorious time of their life. Where they are molded and grown and shaped. Restored. Sometimes broken. Because on the other side of all of that is the refining and the polishing as you step us into our purpose and into your plan. And all of that and through all of that is how you bring us into our healed bodies. You are amazing, Papa, and we give you all the glory. Thank you for what you're doing here today. Thank you for what you're doing in us every day. Keep a hedge of protection over all of us from the enemies, feeble attempts. May we be wise and strong and send in packing. And keep us full of you so that nothing else can enter and nothing else can hang on because being polished with you. There's no way to get a grip. Thank you for loving us, Papa. We ask all this in your holy and precious name of Jesus. Amen. Lead. It was nice three second inhales, nice three second exhales. And again, if that's too much, kick it back. If that's not enough, kick it up. Oh, that's awesome, Deb. She says, "My incredible hundred-plus-year apricot tree behind me. It's growing at 45% or 45-degree tilt. My horses use it as their scratching post. The apricots are just starting to blush towards ripening. God is good regarding my family." Very awesome. He no question. No question. It's amazing. So amazing. And so amazing that you have an apricot tree. Love apricots. Just feel Papa's glorious hand touching your body, your mind, your spirit today. Rest in his hands. Know that he is present. Know that he is wrapping his loving arms around you. Vision him laying right next to you. Feel his hope. His goodness, promises, filling you up. Know that you are never alone. I was just reading your, your, uh, message, Ken. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Six-hour surgery. I stand corrected. That's amazing. That's amazing. Talents these beautiful people have. God blessed them with the ability to restore. That's just unreal. Unreal and amazing. What a blessing. Very cool, Deb. Go ahead on your next inhale and take in another nice deep breath in. During breath. Feel that wall. Know it's okay. Just rest in that breath. Says, "My Katie girl is resting in peace right next to me between me and the apricot tree, right where she laid all the times, looking over our property, missing her a lot." I know, I hear you. Missing Ms. Copper today as well. She, she entered my mind heavily this morning. She has been, but this morning for some reason a little stronger. Our animals are so amazing, so nurturing, so purposeful in our lives. Beautiful for a healing journey, beautiful for any part of our journey, but especially during our healing journeys. Very powerful. Very powerful. I have extra prayers for you, Deb. So I'm going to take you through three deeper breaths. Just follow my lead. If the breath is too long or the exhale's too long, just shorten it. Work with it. Everything's gentle. Nothing is forced. Just take in a really nice deep breath in and follow my lead. Gently turn that into an exhale. Just guide that breath. Visualize that breath going down through your body, through your chest and your heart, your lungs, your organs. Down through your hips and your pelvis. Imagine it going out your toes like a tsunami rolling through the body. Another breath in. Gentle exhale. Just take that breath from the top of your head, through your brain. Move your neck and your shoulders, loosen them, down your back and all of your muscles. Through your hips and your pelvis, your tailbone, your butt. Through your legs, your feet and out your toes. Another nice deep breath in. Face of your skull, your neck and your shoulders, down through every cell, tendon, ligament. Facia through your bones, through your attic and all your organs, down your legs, through your feet and out. Need to breathe in that nice three-second breath. Just rest in that breath. Know that you're right where you need to be. You are safe. You are loved. You are needed. If you're hearing me humming. It may sound woo-woo, may seem a little weird, but the humming stimulates and activates your nervous system and helps to calm the body even more. So as you're exhaling, just gently hum. Sound in the sympathetic nervous system in our fight and flight mode all the time. Breathwork helps to work you through the parasympathetic to the rest and restore. This activates all of the systems in your body. It activates your lymphatic system. This is the greatest tool for lymphatic drainage. It's why I'm here today. Within five minutes from a gifted session over three years ago, my lymphatic system just blasted open and stayed open. I had chronically clogged lymphatic. Our lymphatic system is the garbage truck of our system. If we are not draining properly and our lymphatic system is not working properly, we're overloaded with toxicity. It's just breathe, rest in the breath. Reason I said to visualize while you're breathing is because that adds a brain-body connection that is absolutely profound. Our bodies are miraculous healing machines and God has given us the gift of healing. Our bodies are miraculous healing machines and God has given us the gift of healing. Ken is praising, absolutely, right? So when you connect the brain and the body and you just envision that breath going down through the body, on the exhale, like a tsunami, you're taking all the garbage with it, all our stored stuff, that extra suitcase that we're carrying behind us. Don't need all that baggage, we don't need all that stuff. So just envision all of your baggage leaving every time you exhale and as you're inhaling, just envision your body puffing up and that oxygen going to every orifice that you need. Still allow your body to be restored, allow your body to receive the oxygen. Want you to know that it's okay to go fast, it's also okay to go slow. So many of you are on healing journeys and you feel guilty, we're afraid to go slow, people will think you're lazy. Many of you may not be on a healing journey and you feel that anyway, because that's what our world programs us to think, that when we take time for self-care, we are lazy. We are not lazy. This gives us the opportunity to restore our bodies, to be the best form of ourselves so that we can be better equipped. Us around us, our children, our spouse, and we can be better at work. We are on a healing journey, it's restorative, it gives us hope, it helps us to feel better, it removes all the aches and pains because as the lymphatic system is open, all the inflammation. So I see there's more people joining on YouTube. Now, right into a three second exhale and just gently breathe. Matter. There's nothing forced. Just know that you are being held in Papa's hands. You are here for a reason, don't be afraid, know that you can chat with me in the chat for those of you that are on YouTube. Your next inhale, go ahead and take in a deeper breath, you're gonna still feel that wall, it's okay, that stopped, but you're all, are feeling it crumbling, your lungs are expanding and just gently exhale. Nothing is forced, you can't screw this up. Laura, that was so funny, Sadie was just looking down on you like, you, you alright? Checking, I see. Sadie's playing ball while Laura is lying in the grass. Grounded, listening to the animals outside, feeling the breeze. Right where you need to be. He has a purpose for you, he has a plan. Trust him, trust him with everything. Bad and the ugly. In other words, pray all the time, don't just pray when you're struggling, don't just pray when you're, when you're hurting. Pray all the time. Praise him in the good. Oh, very awesome, very awesome, that's exciting. Mr. Kent, oh, very cool, I get to see them, his ducklings arrived. He had to go get the package from the carrier and just shared his little ducklings that just arrived, that's very awesome. I'm jealous, in a good way. Envious maybe, I'm not sure, it's not a bad feeling. Ducks are the cutest thing ever, I had a duck that thought it was a chicken, for real, did everything but, but make chicken noises, it tried. Know that you are needed, know that you are loved, know that you are cherished, know that you are valued and that you are valuable. And you know, it's super important to remember. Don't lose your faith, focus on God through the storm, focus on God, not the stress, focus on God, not the path and the pain, focus on God, not the anxiety, focus on God, not the struggle. Trust God to lead you and guide you through every storm, struggle every pain, he's bigger than it all. He loves you, he values you, always present, even when you don't feel it. And if no one has told you this today, I just want you to know that I am super proud of you and I know that God is proud of you too. You're showing up every day, you're showing up, it's all we can do is show up, just show up. Mr. David, welcome. Go ahead and start breathing, Mr. David is joining us from Kenya, Africa. We've got Canada in the house, good morning brother, go ahead and just start breathing, that man lights me up, you all light me up. David's got a smile that you can see miles away. But we got Canada in the house, we got Washington State, we've got Minnesota, we've got Idaho in the house, we got Kenya and we've got others joining on YouTube. Feel free to share where you're joining us from. Know that you're welcome, know that you're valuable. For those of you joining on YouTube, feel free to join our community, it's a loving, accepting place where you can lock arms with other believers, other friends, don't apologize for being late, I'm glad you're here. Oh, no worries, no worries, you're all good, you are all good. No, Kansas isn't here today. Not today, but last week, we had Kansas in the house. And you know what, you just show up when you can and allow me to bless you when you get here, you guys have no idea how much of a blessing it is for me to bless you and just your presence, so just settle in and go ahead and breathe and on your next inhale, go ahead and take in another nice deep breath in. Rest in Papa's hands. That you are right where you need to be. And as you breathe, just continue to breathe, a nice three second inhale, nice three second exhale, again, if that's too much, kick it back, if that's not enough, kick it up, but gentle, don't overdo it. And as you are breathing, I'm going to read to you from Jesus always. As you look to me more and more, this is as if Jesus is speaking to you, I become your joyful focus, amen. When you look at the world today, many disturbing things call out for your attention. If you're, if you concentrate too much on those things, you will become deeply discouraged. Truth. Meanwhile, the one who is continually with you calls out, I am here, look to me beloved, find joy in me, amen. My presence can bless you always, even when it's only in the background of your mind. You can learn to stay conscious of me while you are engaged in other matters. The magnificent brain I gave you can function on several tracks at once. When you're doing something that involves a lot of brain power, your awareness of my presence will be subtle, nonetheless, it can be comforting and encouraging. Making me your joyous focus is not escapism. On the contrary, your attentiveness to me strengthens you and gives you courage to cope with the difficulties in your life or around you. The more persistently you look to me, the more effective and joyful you will be, amen. A relationship with Papa. Prayers to Papa. The closer we get to him and the more we pull into him, the more we feel his presence, the more we see his hand. And that's where you hear the still small voice, the guiding hand, the leading light. Call him into everything. Those projects that consume your mind, call him into them. When I was taking my final the other day, I don't know about you guys, but sometimes true or false questions, the way they're worded, it could go either way, I really despise true and false questions. And I asked Papa to join me and I kind of laughed about it and I said, you know, I've never asked for this before, but it's been a struggle my whole life, make those crazy true and false questions clean. He did, he will, he hears us, he answers our prayers. Please believe that he's. Read from Jesus' calling. Boy, if these do not align. To everything I was speaking about this morning on my YouTube live, stop worrying long enough to hear my voice. I speak softly to you in the depths of your being. Your mind shuttles back and forth, hither and yon, weaving webs of anxious confusion. I'm gonna add staying stuck on the worries, on the, on the concerns, on the world. As my thoughts rise up within you, they become entangled in those sticky webs of worry. Thus my voice is muffled and you hear only white noise. Ask my spirit to quiet your minds so that you can think my thoughts. This ability is an awesome benefit of being my child, patterned after my own image. Do not be deafened by the noise of the world or that of your thinking. Let me inject the enemy. Instead, be transformed by the renewing of your mind, sit quietly in my presence, letting my thoughts reprogram your thinking. Deuteronomy thirty twenty, and that you may love the Lord your God, listen to his voice and hold fast to him, for the Lord is your life and he will give you many years in the land he swore to give to your fathers Abraham, Isaac and Jacob. Genesis one twenty-seven, so God created man in his own image and in the image of God he created him male and female, he created them. I'm gonna add Genesis two seven. I'm going to paraphrase, he breathed life, the first breath of life into man. Romans twelve two, do not conform any longer to the pattern of this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind, then you will be able to test and approve what God's will is, his good. Amen. Keep praying, keep pulling into him, keep trusting him with everything. Go ahead on your next inhale and take in another nice deep breath. That you do is enough, that you have enough. If you are worried because your funds are low or you're worried because your pantry is low, pray. I went through a season of my life where I truly only had two pennies to rub together. Papa took me to Atlanta, Georgia with my husband on a plane, where I had my surgery and was there for a, almost a month. Papa provided every penny, my hotel room was paid for by a friend, our airfare and our food and our rental car was provided by a fundraiser, a friend put together. Went six months without an income so my husband could take care of me and we never went without a meal or a roof over our head, a warm location. And we were able to feed another family from our larder at the same time. He heard our prayers, he answered them, he will never leave us, he will never forsake us, pray. Papa hears our prayers. When I met Ken, he had stage four kidney cancer, he is cancer-free today. Naturally, he's given a thumbs up and we've got lots of praises going on in the house. Papa is the ultimate healer, Papa provides, Papa nurtures, Papa heals. At here, I want you to know that the last fifteen minutes can feel a little rough for some, especially those that are just joining and have never done breathwork before, please stay with me, if you jump out early and you feel off, you're gonna feel off the rest of the day, just stay with me, I will guide you through the uncomfortableness. Chat, let me know that you need assistance. You breathe, our breath is very powerful, if you feel tightness or tension anywhere in the body, just take in some deeper breaths and envision your breath going to that place of tightness and tension. You can easily release a pinched nerve, say you have a pinched nerve in your shoulder, lay flat, take in some nice deep breaths and nice gentle exhales, envision that breath going to the area of your pinched nerve. What happens is as you're exhaling and you're directing your breath, you're softening, excuse me, softening those muscles, ten, fifteen minutes later, you will no longer have a pinched nerve. Our bodies, our miraculous healing machines, our brains and our body connection have the ability to loosen, to soften, to renew, to restore. Next inhale and take a much deeper breath. Feel that wall crumbling or your body softening. Biting your nervous system. Why you feel good when you sing, it's vibrational. A resident eagle had been sitting on one of the trees directly in front of me during my coaching session and now I just had mama and Papa quail run across the yard out my window with their, I was, we're joking, with their herd. We have ten pairs and they are all sitting on nests, each quail nest usually produces between ten and twelve quail. Ice them in there so that they have a good place to hunker for winter. It's a lot of quail, it's a lot of eggs, these are wild quail, they visit every year and they keep multiplying. Started out with two pairs, now I have ten pairs. Lot of fun to watch them, it's Papa's presence, Papa's hand. Again and take in another nice deep breath in. But again, and take in another nice deep breath in. Peace. You can choose to be present. You can choose to be slow. Can choose to be unapologetically new. You can choose to be unapologetically Christian. All of the above. And I walk that out in a very peculiar fashion because we are called to be peculiar in the word in multiple places. I own that. There is power in being who you are called to be. Be your peculiar self. Be unapologetically your peculiar self. We are called to be unique. The next thing you need to do is love yourself. Look in the mirror today and love who you see, whether you are a man or a woman. Self-love is not weird. Self-love is not prideful. Self-love isn't. Are called to love and that starts with ourselves. And we can love ourselves. We can love our neighbors. And we can love ourselves. We can love our families deeper, better, can show up better. Mr. David always shares in our sessions very divinely. Very awesome. He says, I share this in the community. I pray will uplift and revive you. Ezekiel thirty seven, one through ten. When Papa took Ezekiel to the valley full of dry rotten bones that had no identity and recognition, no one knew what the bones were meant to be because they had lacked identity. But when the power of the divine creativity came upon the empty and dry bones, they became men of war, mighty army of the Lord. So this is my prayer. Oh Father, let all dead bones in my life begin to rise and become a mighty army. Father, let all dead visions and sleeping dreams awake and begin to fulfill your purpose in your mighty holy name. Father, empower and anoint me to do all your will and perform all your plans for my life. Amen. I'm in agreement. I second that. In Jesus' name, and so is Mr. Ken. Thank you for sharing, David, and that should empower many people. That's exactly it. He gives us life. He fills us with purpose. He fills us with courage and strength. So I'm gonna take you into a deeper place right now. Want you to take in a nice, deep breath in. All crumbling. Let's just get quiet for a few minutes here. Love you. Will never leave you. Forsake you. And again, go ahead and take in another nice, deep breath in. Me repeat after me. And I'm gonna get quiet. Just want you to spirit. Go ahead and take in another deep breath in. I'll repeat after me. In this still quiet moment, God, what are you trying to show me? Again, go ahead and take in another nice, deep breath in. Quiet moment, God. What are you trying to tell me? Not hearing anything or feeling anything. There's nothing wrong with you. I will tell you, the more that you pull into Papa, the more you invest in that relationship, because trust me, it's an investment. It is a more you pull in and the more you invest in that relationship with him, the more he shows up, guides you, the more he makes your path clear. He abundantly blesses you. Not necessarily in financial blessings. Mind that as you pull into him, the financial blessings are the least of your worries because he blesses you in such amazing ways. Restores your mind. He restores your spirit. There is nothing better on this earth than a relationship with Christ. Hands down. Best in that relationship. Go ahead again and take in a much deeper breath. Feel that wall crumbling. Your lungs expanding, your body softening. And repeat after me, in this still quiet moment, God, if my body could speak, what would it tell me? I practice, teach my clients, my community, how to become in tune with their reality in order to become in tune with our bodies, come in tune with him. Gifted and intuitiveness in your life. Thank you, Ken, for sharing that. You know what? I'm gonna reach out to her today too, because I have reason to. I got it. We got it. Together. Papa's got it. No one left behind on our watch, right? Saying that, also know that you have power in those around you. Goodwinning, my friend. Go ahead again and take in another nice, deep breath in. That's Miss Patty. Miss Patty, am I right? Is that you joining us this afternoon or this morning? I think you're still in my time. Nope, your, your afternoon. Welcome to settle in, start breathing. Know that you are right where you need to be, right at this exact moment. And all of you, know that when life gets heavy, you don't need to do it alone. Don't need to do it alone. This is not just breath work. This is a rally session of prayer warriors. So remember today, if you have prayer needs, you can privately message them to me. You can put them in the regular chat. If you're on YouTube, you can, you can email me if you've got private things, support at faithledhealing.com at any given time. If you are not part of my community, get in. Faithledhealing.com slash community. Life is not meant to be done alone. Papa's grateful when you pull into him and you do life with him. But he still calls us to fellowship. Fellowship with others. Gather with other like-minded people so that you can lock arms. Experience life very different and very supported way. Go ahead again and take in another nice, deep breath in. Your lungs. Feel that wall just about crumbled. Laura, I can see the treetops. When I'm laying on the ground like that, I'm always looking for heart shapes in the trees and it never fails. I always see one. So you've got my eyes scouring. I love that. I love that. That's one of the ways that Papa shows his presence to me. I see heart shapes in everything and in, and everywhere. Like I've been hiking already and looked down at my boot and see a heart rock the size of the tip of my pinky and I've got tiny hands. Parking lot. After my surgery, there was a piece of heart-shaped chewing gum stuck to the concrete. I've seen frothy hearts in mud puddles. People send me heart-shaped potato chips and pickles. Comes contagious. Laura, there is one right now. I see it. That's hysterical. I love it. Two of them now. I love it. Ask and you shall receive. That's how it works, guys. That's how it works. Morning, Miss Vicky. So glad you're here. Just so you, um, folks know that just joined me, I actually have this streaming live on YouTube this morning because I felt Papa pressed that on my heart because we had a um, really beautiful YouTube Live this morning with people needing hope and nurturing. So I took this live on YouTube this morning. So if you have anything personal that you want to share with me, put it in a private uh, message in the chat. They're all loved. Regardless what happened in your life, what transpired, know that you are truly loved. There is never a wrong that we can do that will negate his love for us. All you gotta do is pull in. Pull into Papa. Share your sins, express your sins to him and ask for his forgiveness. It's that simple. And boom, you are, you are in. We are all offered the same thing. Only thing is, a lot of people don't accept the offer. Accept the offer. It's right there. You're touching it. All you've got to do is say yes. Will that make life amazing and get rid of all the chaos? No. What it will do, bring him into your corner and he will never leave you. He will never forsake you. He will be sitting next to you. He will be leading the way through the chaos you might experience. But let me tell you something, I would never, ever, ever want to go through the chaos again without him in it. And even better yet, I let him lead. Take me where you're taking you, Papa. Show me what you're showing me. I need nothing. I just need you. I am happy. I am joy-filled. I am content. I never feel like I'm lacking. And yeah, my life goes upside down quite often. But I embrace it and I walk through it. And I follow him. Quite honestly, I'm hanging on to his robe and my feet are flailing. I'm catching bugs in my teeth and it's the best ride of my life. Good. Know that God is good. And know this. You are worthy. You are worthy of his love regardless what has happened in your life, regardless what mistakes you've made. We've all made mistakes. Every person in this room is a cracked vessel. Absolutely cracked vessel. We've all made mistakes. And we have the choice to put that cracked vessel under a basket and hide it or we can let our light shine because that's his light shining through our cracks. And here's your humor. My husband and my son always go the wrong direction when I say we're cracked. Because yes, we are all cracked, but that's not what I'm talking about. Our vessels are cracked. Imagine a piece of pottery, if you will, please. Mr. David's is last week during the session, I remember you said your power was going off after you exited. The rest also exited and I remained alone sweeping and cleaning. I hope you all got the space when it's clean. I love it. I know I saw you at the end. Yes, we live off grid and it was a glorious sunny day, but I was plugged into a source of power that wasn't completely full at the time and I tapped it right at the end of the session. That was the enemy trying to cut off Ashley, but we've been praying for Ashley. So keep Ashley in your prayers, everybody. That was funny though, and I love that. Breathing and just resting in the breath. Power of just deep breathing, just continuing to lay there resting in his hands, breathing in that breath. To know that you're not defined by your mistakes. Know that you're not defined by your choices. Know that you are not defined by the chaos in your life. Thank you. Know that you are not defined by other people's inability to see your worth. Please let that sink in. Those were powerful words spoken to me in my healing journey. So often we define ourselves based on other people. They're jaded in their thinking. We are defined by him. Remember that. Also, know that you are not defined by other people's junk, their dysfunction, their chaos. Not defined by that. Gotcha, sister. I will put that in. Okay, so the link to my community is faithledhealing.com slash community. For those of you that are on YouTube and find us, join our community. You do not need to walk out your struggles by yourself. Surrounding ourselves with like-minded people that are there to lock arms, pray. Our, our prayers are most powerful tool. We pray for each other. We, we We pray for each other. We, we support each other. We hold each other up. It's so valuable. The other link I'm gonna put in here today is I offer a 30-minute free consultation. It's a discovery call. Join me. I go face-to-face with you on Zoom and, you know, we can talk about whatever you need to talk about, what's going on in your life, the health issues you're having. Putting that in the chat too, and I will share that right here. It is faithledhealing.com/workwithme. Symptoms in our bodies that the world calls disease have root causes. Typically very simple root causes, imbalances because of toxicity. And so many people allow those things to define their walk on this planet. Please get on my calendar. Gut imbalances, headaches, migraines, aches and pains. Inflammation, autoimmune illnesses. Let me just say, whatever you've got going on that's ailing you, get on a discovery call with me. I promise you, you will gain new insight. You are not defined by your illness. You are not defined by your struggles. You are not defined by your pains. All right, sweet lady, I love you. God bless. Have an awesome rest of your day. Keep glowing and shining, sister. Love you. All right. Go ahead again and take in another nice deep breath in. For those of you that might have been struggling for the last 15 minutes, I got you. Keep breathing with me. Listen to the words of encouragement that I'm sharing with you. That's Papa speaking through me. We all go through chaos. We all go through hard times. One of the most beautiful things of going through a hard time is knowing that you have people in your corner that when you're rocking in the corner and you can't reach your bootstraps, they are there to pray you up so that you get a little taller, your arms get a little longer, and you're able to grab your bootstraps again. We've all been there. I've been there. But you know what? I've got a powerful circle surrounding me. I don't ever do it alone. And yes, he hears our prayers, but he also provides a beautiful circle around us. If you don't have that, pray for it. I was deceived by many people for a long time, and then I prayed to Papa to bring me my circle, and he did. And they're sitting in front of me right now. It's a beautiful thing. You do not need to do life alone. You do not need to go through hard alone. So I pray that if you're joining me on YouTube today and you are struggling, get on my calendar, get in my community. I can help you at many different levels. Laura, there's a cross in your, in your trees right now too, and the sun's shining right around it. Oh, I love the gift of sight Papa's given me, the gift to see all of his blessings. Go ahead again and take in another nice deep breath in. Gonna breathe a little longer today. Had some people join late, I'm gonna give them at least 15 minutes of breathing. Those of you that have been joining me from the beginning, you're getting just a little extra bonus. All you need to do is just lay there and breathe. If you feel like you need to cry, cry. If you feel like you need to be angry, be angry. Be sad, laugh. Let it all hang out. There is beauty in letting our emotions flow. There is release in letting our emotions flow. Stay there. You don't need to stay there. Just let them surface. Then feel Papa's arms around you. You know, a lot of people are afraid to let their emotions surface because they're afraid if they do let them surface, they'll stay there. It's the other beauty of having a circle of people around you to support you. Let it all hang out. And if you need help in that season, because you can't let it go on your own, through your own prayers, when three or more join together, there's a strong bond there. We will circle you. We will join you. We will pray. A lot of times the enemy likes it when we're in that place alone, because he can keep us there. I don't like the enemy. I tell him to kiss my wind. I tell him to go pound sand. And I tell him that I don't live on bread alone. Same thing. Raise a life with Papa. Understand what you have in that relationship. Understand that you have other brothers and sisters desiring to carry you and put you. That's what our community offers. Go ahead again and take in another nice deep breath in. Hmm, took a while today. My lymphatic system is blasting open right now. So that's another area where when you're doing breathwork, when you're in a breathwork session, whatever happens here stays here. Sometimes you'll feel your belly churning. Other times you'll feel it hollowly gurgling. That hollow gurgle is your lymphatic system opening. It is a joyous thing. That's the power of our breath. I'm gonna end us with three deeper breaths right now. Guide you out of the session. Just go ahead and take in another nice deep breath in now. I hope and pray that this was nurturing and restorative for you. You're welcome to reach out to me at any time. If you've watched the replay and need assistance, support at faithledhealing.com. Miss Deb, you look rested. She's wowing. She's giving me the thumbs up. Good. You couldn't have picked a better location. She was grounding on the earth with her trees above her also, so very awesome. All right, let's end this session with three deep breaths. Just take in that nice deep breath in. Just turn that breath around into your exhale, the top of your head, through your brain, soften your neck and your shoulders, down through your chest and your heart and your lungs, your organs, your hips and your pelvis, your legs, your feet, and your toes. Another deep breath in. Your skull, your back and all of your muscles, your spine, your ribs, your low back, your tailbone, your butt, hips and your pelvis, your legs, your feet, and your toes. Another nice deep breath in. Your skull, your neck and your shoulders, down through every cell, tendon, ligament, muscle, fascia, your cheek, your buttock, your hips and your pelvis, your legs, your feet, and your toes. And we are all done. If you're still feeling off, just keep breathing. If you're feeling good, get in the chat. Let me know how you're feeling. Let me know how you're doing. Ah, Laura, you look extremely refreshed. That's awesome. They're like little kids. I love it. They join me laying in their yards and the grass, their animals and the sounds. And let me tell you something, I'm 55 and I'm owning childlike behavior. Just because they say we need to become an adult does not mean that we can't be kids. I'm a big kid at heart, so go climb a tree, go lay in your yard. Go sing like nobody's listening, go dance like nobody's watching, and be sure to live like there's no tomorrow. We aren't promised tomorrow, but we are promised this glorious day that we are living out right now, right? Thank you, my friend. Mr. Ken says you've been more than amazing this morning. What a blessing. I'm always afraid I'm talking too much, but Papa's like blasting through me, so I imagine it was things people needed to hear. So you can find myself and my practice at faithledhealing.com. Um, if you're not sure what an integrative health practitioner is, that means that I help people get to the root cause of whatever is ailing them. And let me tell you, I take that very boldly in the fact that it is a spiritual, mental, emotional, and physical journey. So I'm not just taking you to physical health. We need to be balanced. And you could see that through the breathwork session today, I take that very seriously. And as you can see now, you know what breathwork is if you did not know what it was before. But the most important message today, don't do it alone. You don't need to do it alone. If you are solely alone right now in this world and you feel lonely and hopeless, don't stay there. You've got resources available to you. Even if you don't feel comfortable in a community setting, reach out to me. Get on my calendar for a 30-minute consultation. Faithledhealing.com/workwithme. I do these breathwork sessions every week. Faithledhealing.com/workwithme. Scroll down, you'll see my group sessions. Um, if you can't afford to pay, use coupon code BREATHEFREE. If you have a friend that you want to invite, you can give them a coupon code FRIENDS7 and they can join for $7. I make this as inexpensive as possible. Why? Because there's a lot of hurting, hopeless people in this world, and they don't need to suffer alone. This is my gift to the world. So please embrace it, use it. I'm not doing this just for fun. I'm doing this for fun and to be able to speak life into you and lock arms with you. So Miss Deb says, thank you, Tammy. Saw I met Millie Copper at the Modern Homesteading Conference in Coeur d'Alene a couple of weeks ago. Hug for all of you from her. Awesome. She is near and dear to my heart. I, I'm thankful that you sent me that picture. That was awesome. Um, she is embracing her writing like a fool, and I am embracing my schooling and integrative health and breathwork and and nurturing people like a fool. And I will, I will continue to do that in a peculiar fashion. Hopefully, um, you resonated with me, uh, YouTube. I'm really grateful that you were joining today. I love you all. And you know what? I'm gonna pray us out of here today, because I feel, I'm feeling it on my heart that there's people that need prayer today. So Papa, I just thank you for this glorious day. I thank you for all of these beautiful people. We had a full house today. And I just thank you for that. I want to lift up Patty and Vicky and, and, uh, Deb and Laura and Shelley and Ken and David. And I want to lift up Carmen that joined me today on YouTube and Annie. And I want to lift up Ashley that was here last week that really needs nurturing and love and prayers. And I want to lift up Shelley's client, Jack. And I want to lift up, uh, my family. And, um, I want to lift up my community and my practice and everything I do. And Papa, I ask that you just bless it. And, 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 um, may it be all of you and none of me. And I just ask that whatever and whoever is watching today, even the replay, that you just be with them and nurture them, because there's always everybody's got a story. Everybody's got a silent struggle. And Papa, we may not see it on the surface, because I walked around for years with smiles on my face and inside I was hurting immensely. So Papa, I ask, you know, be with each and every one that needs your love today. And I ask that you give it to them. I ask that you wrap your loving arms around them, nurture them, give them hope. May they feel your hand, may they feel your presence, may they, may they have heard something that you spoke through me today that resonated, that nurtured them, that touched them. And Papa, just may they feel restored. May they look at life through joyful anticipation of what you have for them, even in the chaos, instead of living life out of expectation and out of worry and anxiety and fear. Replace all that with joyful anticipation of what you have for them. Not what the world has for them, not what they are expecting, but what you have for them. And Papa, just love on them, provide for all of their needs. And may they feel your presence, and may they know that they have people to come to when they're struggling. Papa, thank you for what you, for the place and the seat you've set me in, for guiding me down this path that I never saw for myself, and for allowing me to abundantly be able to be blessed by people's presence and being able to have the knowledge to help them. Thank you for all you're doing. Be with Jessica also. Touch her body. Heal her. No pain. Beautiful healing. Papa, thank you. Thank you for loving us. Be with Vicky. Nurture her, David and the family. Give her great power and strength. Papa, we love you. Thank you for what you're doing, what you're gonna do. And we ask all of this as you fill us up in your holy and precious name of Jesus. Amen. Hmm, I'm so full. I love. I love you, Ken. Thank you. Love you, guys. Have a beautiful rest of your day. I do this every week. I'm live on YouTube every week. Be nurtured. Come be nurtured, be filled. And thank you for allowing me to speak life into you today. Um, Deb says, the son, our son is glorious. Amen. And she says, healing prayer. So appreciated. All right. I love you, guys. God bless. And know there is hope and you are not alone. Be restored and feel his hand. God bless you all.